Go ahead and get started. I see Ms. Page joining us, so we'll go ahead and get started. I believe Mr. Bill King will join us soon. So, good afternoon, happy Friday. It's good to see all of you, and thank you for joining us this afternoon. It is Friday, June 4th. It is 3:03 PM. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and get started, and hopefully get everyone out so you can enjoy your weekend. Again, thank you for joining us. I will remind everyone, if you are not speaking or not presenting, please make sure you are muted, and if you wouldn't mind turning your video off as well just to help with bandwidth, if you're not presenting or speaking, that would help as well. Thanks so much. Not that I don't enjoy seeing all of your smiling faces, but... So, again, good afternoon. Good to see all of my board colleagues, Dr. Miguel and all of our staff. Thank you so much. As we end a Friday work week, we'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. I'll read our board norms as we do at every board meeting. "We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business." With that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
All right. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve today's special agenda.
Some move.
Second.
You missed it.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, so we're going to go ahead and jump right into our agenda. First item on our agenda, it, Board, you should have received a couple of emails from myself and talking about a recommended position to be, that's being recommended for approval today from the Board, or for an associate superintendent of leading and learning. You should have received a job description or draft job description with information regarding the position and the rationale and everything that, we did have a couple of questions that were asked, so I tried to get the information that were, that was asked of staff and about the position. So, I'm just going to pass it on to Dr. Miguel to see if there's anything else, any other information you would like to provide regarding the position. Otherwise, I'd, being recommended for approval today, if there are questions from Board members, or if there's a motion to approve. So, Dr. Miguel, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. Just the additional information that this is an existing position, and we are, the proposal is, or the recommendation is to upgrade it, and the goal is to expand some responsibilities in order to provide more continuity and to align some areas, such as curriculum, instruction, special education, the Office of the Instructional Improvement Offices, Officers, Educational Research, Diploma Plus, and these are areas that now report to different people. So, we're trying, it's all related to instruction, so we're trying to bring them all together and create some coherence. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Dr. Miguel, are there any questions? If... Nah. Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and thank you, Dr. Miguel. Could you, I've got two kind of generic questions and two specific ones. Where is the other job description posted so we can compare?
The current position of Assistant Superintendent.
Correct.
I imagine it's in the, in the Board Library when it was approved, back whenever it was approved. I can submit it. If you would like to get both side by side, I can send it to the Board as an attachment.
Right, or it's not in the Board Library. I didn't see it. So, if you...
Okay.
Wherever you want to put it, just let Ms. Smith know. And then the second one, so, are you saying then, the, all of those positions would report to this position? And if that, well, first, is that what you're saying? The, the positions you just said that were reporting to different people, would they all then become, be reporting to this position?
Correct. So, and I apologize, Dr. Nguyen, my, I think, I'm going to turn my video off. It looks like my internet is not very stable, so you were cutting off at times for me, but I think I got the gist of the question right. So, for example, right now, curriculum and instruction and Diploma Plus, in the current organizational chart that we have, report to the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, but the Instructional Improvement Officers report to somebody else, and Special Education reports to somebody else. All of these are areas of instruction. So, upgrading this position will allow us to expand the areas of support and supervision and bring all of these instructional areas under one person.
Okay. So, then that would lead me into my two-part then substantive question. Should that not be included in the job description to identify who then, well, let me ask it like this. You say they report to them. Does that mean this person would supervise them?
Correct.
That's maybe not, they would supervise them?
Correct.
Okay. Should that be put into the job description?
I'm pretty sure it is. I'm pretty sure it is. I can check.
Okay. That's, that's one kind of question. And then where it says anticipate, manage, and resolve conflicts, is that for which employees? The ones that would report to them?
Right. And, and that's pretty standard language for any of the upper management positions.
Okay. I'm not questioning the language. I was just, for clarity, that when the person applies, they know that this is within their job responsibilities. And then last, please, where it says qualifications, master's degree, help me understand why that wouldn't be specific to the job?
How?
That person with a master's degree in history couldn't cut the mustard, but you're not being specific by saying...
Oh, because, because it doesn't say in school leadership or in educational leadership? Is that, I'm not understanding that.
Correct. That's what I'm asking. Should it be more specific? Otherwise, I could apply, I have a, you know, doctorate in history, which, and a master's in, in liberal arts.
Okay, yeah. That may have been an oversight. We can, we can look at that. Thank you for noticing that, Dr. Nguyen.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We will review it and, and send it back, and we, I will then attach the current position so that you can compare side by side.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Thank you, Madam.
Good, Dr. Nguyen. Other questions? Otherwise, the recommendation is to approve the position today. The staff is asking for approval today, so I would entertain a motion to approve the position of Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
So, move.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Drew, Ms. Clark. Further discussion? Okay. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphrey.
Janie Humphrey, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Nguyen?
Um, let me explain my vote like this. I'm excited about the position, and I understand the rationale. Unfortunately, because my constituents are telling me that administrative salaries keep increasing, increasing, and this would warrant an increase, so I would have to vote no.
You, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Miguel. All right, we will continue on with our agenda. Next up, we have budget workshop, so I'm going to go ahead and pass it on to Dennis. Board, you should have received an email from me as well, just kind of outlining what the discussion will be today. So, we, we do have kind of flowed, Ms. Page and I met, Dr. Miguel and Mr. Covington yesterday, just to make sure we're using the best use of our time that we have today. So, hopefully, we can stay on track with the discussion today. There will be plenty of opportunity to continue our discussion after today's meeting as well, but just to try to make sure we're, we get through those items we want to. There are some parking lot questions, for lack of a better term, we can hold those and, and get to those in another meeting. But I'll go ahead and pass it on to Mr. Covington, as he's got plenty to get through with us today. Mr. Covington and Dr. Miguel, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and Board members. Before we dive into the initiatives, I thought we would get a brief presentation from Lisa Walker on goals, and I would turn it over to Lisa.
All right. Thank you, Chief Covington. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Just give you a little visual to help. So, over the past two years, we've had a partnership with the Kansas Learning Network, which is a team that works on behalf of KSDE, and we've done training with all of our building leaders around an evidence-based framework that we use for school improvement planning. And we also use the same process at the district level for the KISA work, which is the Kansas Educational System for accreditation in the district for, in the state for all of our districts. So, a big part of these improvement frameworks is trying to figure out a way to make all of this big work actionable and measurable. And we do that by identifying and measuring process and outcome goals, and that becomes a really strategic part of the budgetary cycles and our annual improvement So, I want to walk you through kind of our thought process and how, how we kind of approach this. And you see up there in the top left-hand side of your screen, those two questions, essential questions, we call them, that we're always asking, what are your goals and how are you going to measure them? And one of the areas that we worked on this year in the district during the KISA process is for our leadership team to really be clear on what types of goals and outcomes we're talking about and working to measure. Because in our systems-level work, these two types are generally process and outcome goals that we work on, and it can get confusing when we start to kind of use the word outcome and goals interchangeably. So, I'm going to just walk through an overview of how we think about these two goals. On the left-hand side of your screen, you see the process goals, and those goals are what we think about at the systems level. What do we need to focus on that's going to have the greatest impact on our students? So, what is the system or what do our departments need to do? What do we need to attend to, pay attention to, or what are we not attending to that might be really creating some barriers for staff members, for teachers, for leaders, and then for students? Or maybe we have some gaps and we need to shore up some of our departments or systems to make it easier for teachers and leaders to do their job. So, what does our organization need to do next to impact student outcomes? And we want to identify then those process goals, the work that we're going to do. And when we're thinking about measuring process goals, you know, we're really measuring then the fidelity of that implementation. So, that data might look a little different when we're measuring a process goal. It, it could be artifacts such as the development and implementation of a systems-level framework or program. Maybe we don't have anything in place, so we need to put a framework or program in place, and then we might need procedures, you know, within that framework, who's going to do what and when, and how's it going to look. We might need to measure it through professional development plans. We might use a variety of data resources such as maybe surveys or needs assessments or exit interviews. Could be early warning system indicators or department observation data, walkthrough observation data. We could even look at action plans in school improvement plans at the building level. So, then when we think about process goals and measuring fidelity, you know, the work that the system does or doesn't do then is going to impact what you see on the right-hand side of your screen, those outcome goals. And we call those lagging indicators often because they come later, right? The process goals are leading indicators. That's the work we're doing now that lead up to then these outcomes. So, the outcome goals are more of those student outcomes that we talk about. They're the concrete evidence that we're going to use to say, well, how are we impacting student achievement outcomes? Are, are we getting positive impacts because of the work that we're doing for process goals, or are we negatively impacting student outcomes? And if you look in the lower right-hand part of that screen there, that bottom quadrant, you'll see the variety of student outcome measurements that we would use across the school year, quarterly, semester, and annual to measure how students are doing. And then, of course, at the very bottom, you see the KISA and the Rose Standard capacities. Those two frameworks are intertwined in our strategic plan. So, when we think about then process and outcome goals, in order to think about what are we going to work on, the right next steps that might have the most positive impact, we use an evidence-based practice framework where we identify a precise problem, and then we conduct a root cause analysis. And the reason why these two steps are so important is because first, you know, we have to be really clear on the problem. We need to know, you know, who's having the problem? What, what is the problem? Where and when is it occurring? Because sometimes we'll say, well, everyone says this, or everyone's having a problem, and, and we need to look at, is it really everyone? If it is, and it's happening all the time across all levels for everyone, you know, then that tells us we need a systems-level approach. But if we dig a little deeper and look at the data and say, well, wait a minute, it's not really a precise problem for everyone. It's a problem for a certain group or a certain level. We still want to attend to it, and we still want a problem solve around it, but of course, it's going to get a little bit of a different approach, because we need to figure out, well, what's keeping this, this group or, or at this time of year, what's creating a problem for us not being able to get the job done? Once we figure out that precise problem, we really figure out what are we working on, then we want to conduct a root cause analysis. And oftentimes, we don't like to take the time to do this, but you can't really solve a problem unless you know what is the root cause. And if we don't do the root cause, we end up working on all the symptoms, all the things that are frustrating people and getting in the way. And when we work on the symptoms, it can really sometimes result in initiative fatigue, we're chasing too many things, and then what we are working on doesn't at the end of the day really solve the problem, because it's not the real problem. So, the root cause analysis that we use here in the district, we call it the five whys, and we ask then leaders to at least ask for five reasons why that this is a problem to try to then get down to the root cause. Why is this problem occurring? So, now that I've kind of given you an overview of, of the process, I want to walk through a real-world example of something that just came up this spring during our spring budget meetings. We meet every year with the finance team, the federal programs team, the instructional improvement officer, the building principal, and sometimes the building principal is joined by members of the leadership team. And we look through their needs assessment. This year, that was a new piece that we added. We look at their federal funding allocations, and we look at their general allocations. And we start to then talk through, well, what are the, the things that are getting in your way at your campus? And as we did that, we heard over and over and over a kind of a problem that rose to the top for the district then, because it started to look like everybody was having some barriers when it came to having adequate technology to support high-quality core instruction. So, we started looking at that problem, and you can see some of the data sources there that we use to kind of figure out what's happening, when's it happening, who's having the problem. And once we came up with, hey, we need to take a look at this at the district level, well, then we started to talk with building leaders about, well, why? Why is it a problem? What, what is inadequate? And you can see then kind of the list as we went through the five whys. Here were some of the things that they said. Equipment is missing, okay. What else? Help desk tickets not acted on, okay. Why is that? Because, well, it takes too long to process tickets. Well, why is that? Well, maybe the processing procedures too time-consuming. Okay, why is that? Maybe we don't have enough staff to process the tickets. Why is that? You know, teachers have different devices from students, so now we have to, you know, support different devices. And so, we, as you can see, we kind of kept going through the five whys to, and we did more than five, you can see, to try to get to the bottom of what is the problem. So, in doing that, we could look at some process goals that might come up then for this particular problem. And, and this operational problem is a good one, because sometimes it's difficult to see on the operational side, how does this really align to impacting instruction and outcomes for students? Like, where's the correlation? So, we think about, well, we need to evaluate the TIS department frameworks in order to better support high-quality instruction. I mean, principals and teachers are not able to spend enough time in high-quality instruction using technology, so let's figure out what we can do to solve that problem. So, the first process goal might be, well, we first need to evaluate department procedures for processing help desk tickets. We need to focus on the efficiency of the system and efficiency of staff facilitating this work. So, and these process goals kind of come out of those five whys. So, if we look over to the right side of the screen, well, how would we measure that goal? How would we measure it? We think about measuring fidelity. Well, we might be able to say, well, we need to look for updated written procedures or the plan for submitting and processing tickets, or maybe some updated forms, or maybe we need an updated online reporting system. So, we could look, work through all of those and then look for those artifacts. Did we update the procedures? Did we update the process? We might need to adjust staff schedules and reallocate district staff from other departments maybe, so it would decrease the amount of time it takes to close tickets. And if we did that, then we could look at another data piece might be, well, is there a decrease in the average time it takes to close those tickets? You know, we should see those numbers start to change as we're measuring the fidelity of that process goal. Then if you look at process goal number two, evaluate the budget in regard to distribution of resources and focusing on staffing and equipment. Those are the two big areas of resource distribution in TIS. So, under that, there were kind of two things that fell out. So, maybe looking again at developing and adjusting the staffing plan, not just for the help desk tickets, but the overall staffing plan, to provide more timely processing of fixing and replacing equipment. So, change schedules, improve efficiency, maybe add staff, maybe not. We need to figure that out. And then the second bullet, revise budgets. Maybe we need to look at reallocating some funds or blending some funding streams to develop long-range plans that will keep our classrooms equipped with working and updated technology. We've got a rotation going. So, how would we measure that goal then? Well, in looking at the fidelity, did we do what we said we were going to do or needed to do? Process goal number two on the right, we could look at a revised budget with provisions to support additional or replacement tech tools. Did we revise the budget and have we allocated more money or different money? Increases in the number of working devices. If we do these things, we should see more devices than being operational and ready for classrooms and buildings and departments to use. We should also probably then see a decrease in the number of help desk tickets. And then we could look at classroom observation data to see, well, when, when principals and instructional improvement officers are walking through, are they seeing that tech's being used more, you know? And then the last goal on the left-hand side, the process goal for the system, could be then develop and revise a professional development plan to differentiate learning based on staff need. And that would need to address both the technical and instructional sides of technology. So, remember, one of the whys where we had both Google and Apple products. So, how would we measure that fidelity? So, looking at process goal number three on the right-hand side, well, collaboration with the Professional Workforce Development Director and the instructional teams to develop a professional development plan. Probably need the TIS department to be in on that as well, because we need to look at the technical part, and then also, how do you use tech technology in a transforming way? We could look at classroom observation data again to see, is there an increase in the amount of time that tech is used? And then we'd want to go maybe a step further to say, okay, well, now tech is being used, but now how is it being used? Is it being used in ways that we would consider are transformational or those evidence-based practices that we know are good to use? And then we could look in school improvement plans and see, you know, are there action steps that buildings are taking at their level to make sure that this professional development is transferring then to classrooms? We're seeing it in action. And it might even be in staff evaluations. You know, we have an expectation that if we're doing professional development, then we would have an expectation that once we're trained, we want to start seeing that in practice. So, those would be ways that we could measure then the fidelity. And then thinking about looking at how we'll measure the fidelity of implementation and looking for those artifacts and data to show whether or not we did what we said we were going to do, we can continue to trace that down then to see the impact on those student outcomes. You know, we, we would think that if technology is more readily available for students and teachers, and everyone knows how to use it quickly and efficiently, and we've had training on using it in transformational ways with evidence-based practices, we would expect to see higher levels of student engagement, you know, and students performing stronger on those quarterly outcomes that we're going to measure, or at semester, looking at those outcomes and saying, how are they doing on the tests that we're giving them here in the district? And then we would look at the end of the year at those more, you know, annual summative outcomes, and we would expect to see then, you know, a positive impact because we're being more efficient and tending to things in the system that then is removing barriers or closing gaps for our teachers and for our leaders, because we want their time, you know, focused on meeting the needs of students. So, this kind of gives you just a brief overview of how we kind of think about the continuous improvement cycle and how we're always working to identify and measure those process and outcome goals. So, Chief Covington, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Dennis. Dr. Nguyen, I see you've got your hand up, so I'll go to you. I did, I did just kind of want to provide again just some context in terms of, there, there has been some conversations and questions regarding how we'll measure, you know, a certain, regarding our budget, how, how do we measure some of those outcomes that, especially with the legislature passing some legislation recently? And we thought this would be helpful for us as we think about outcomes and goal setting and how the budget relates to how we measure student achievement and whatnot. So, that was very helpful. Thank you, Lisa, for that information. Dr. Nguyen, I see you had your hand up with a question?
Yes. I would love to hold back for some of the others to have some questions, since this is possibly newer to them.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Are there other board members with questions? If not...
Okay. Not a problem. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Help me though, what a lot that you talked about concentrated on the, the staff. Am I correct in understanding that?
Process goals might be more focused on what the system does or staff do that would impact then student outcomes.
Okay. So, you're saying that was an exam, is an example. Have we had the opportunity then to close that loop? And you understand what I'm saying when I say close the loop, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. Closing the loop as, as far as seeing student outcomes, student performance. Have we had the opportunity to, to use your process goals to see if they actually were successful in measuring student outcomes?
Sure. That is something that we would do on an ongoing basis as a part of that continuous cycle of improvement.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Have you done it?
We're in the process of doing it.
Okay. So, you don't know yet?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a fairly new process for us.
Okay. Now, are the, are you describing the use of federal funds only or all funds?
The process that I'm describing is the one we use for, for all funds.
Right.
Good. Okay.
Yeah.
So, so then my, my specific question is two directions, and again, these are the same questions I've asked Dr. Miguel and Mr. Covington, so nobody surprises. So, I don't want to hear... these are the same questions I've asked Dr. Miguel and Mr. Covington, so nobody surprises. So I don't want to hear that. When then the board is responsible for allocating resources according to this specific language of meeting the rows capacities, how do we fulfill that obligation? Or excuse me, how is that obligation fulfilled in the process you just described? How do we, how do we get that data? How do we know how to do that? How do we allocate resources?
I think I have to defer that to Dr. Miguel or Chief Covington.
Yeah, so I, I think what we were trying to explain with these two processes is how there are some areas or allocation of resources that will be directly linked to student achievement and student outcomes easily. The processes that Ms. Walker was, was sharing with us are a little bit further removed from the actual student outcomes, but they have to happen.
Exactly. I, I, I support those statements.
Right. So in, in order to be thoughtful about how we evaluate and analyze the efficiency of those processes is that we adopted these, the five whys and and identified goals for each of the, those processes that need to happen. I think what, what we are struggling here is with the idea that, for example, when we talk about transportation is an example that, that comes up often as to those things that need to happen. But will, will probably not allow us to produce student achievement data that's directly linked. But we know we have to take the kids to school, right? Because if we don't attend and suffer, student achievement will suffer. But when we look at students' scores, will we see a direct correlation between student outcomes and the fact that our buses are running on time and we have enough bus drivers to take kids to school? So we're trying to explain how we look at these different outcomes and processes in a different way, but use the same model to evaluate their efficiency.
And I understand that fully because nothing happens in isolation.
Correct.
Now, to even narrow that question down, which means to date, and help me understand if I'm correct or incorrect, to date, because you haven't measured the, you haven't closed the loop, the board has limited, I don't, I don't, I'll, I'm gonna be direct, has no evidence, no data, no way to fulfill that responsibility of allocating for student achievement based on just example Ms. Walker gave us, correct? I mean, if we had to right now, take the example Ms. Walker gave us and say, we're gonna allocate four million to X, how can we make that decision? Based on what do we make that decision?
Well, I, I guess based on the recommendations that we make. And, and I know you've been asking for the at-risk funding and we have that here today that we will present if we have time. And if not, it will be attached to my Friday update. So you will have a chance to see what we have used the funding for and, and make.
That's almost a second question. This is a standalone question. This is a question that's called budget certification. That says, regardless of your use of funds, you allocate resources to meet, and it's, and it specifies row standards. So that's all I'm asking is, where do we get that evidence? How do we get that data? How do we do our job? No question, you're doing your job. Never have questioned that. But how do we do our job? And if, if I understand correctly, Ms. Walker's comment, you haven't closed the loop yet. Well, until you close that loop, we don't know where to allocate, if I understand correctly.
Right.
We don't know where to allocate resources so that we can fulfill our statutory responsibility. It doesn't say the superintendent does. It says the board allocates it. And that's, that's the one question. Of course, it comes from your recommendation. We're not, I'm not questioning that. I never have and I won't, and you won't get me to go down that rabbit hole.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't implying that too.
I've always said the board. Now, the second part of the question is that, in the language of the new bill, we, and it's, and it's never been, it's never, it's not a new requirement, it's just an uglier requirement. And I'll say that from the legislature and you know the, the reception you receive. So the fact that, okay. The second question, another question is, we get forty-five million. We should get probably more for at-risk, high-density at-risk money. There's a list of best practices.
Right.
Now, my question would be, is there anything, Ms. Walker, in that process that you said that could apply to either the list of pre-approved at-risk practices or ones that we could get approval of? They don't all have to, all have to be on the list. We can get prior approval. But they must be spent on approved best practices. So is there something in that process? Technology is not on the list, but we know it's important.
Right.
But from your knowledge of that process, are there any items that would qualify for at-risk funding?
We do, you, we do use, you know, the, the evidence-based practices list that you've references from K S D E as well as Watt Works Clearinghouse as well as Evidence for ESSA. And then we also have guidelines for professional development to make sure that it's evidence-based as well. So we, we do.
So give us an example, just example you presented us. Give us an example of something that you presented that is evidence-based that we could, that is eligible for at-risk funding.
I would tell you that an evidence-based program online technology would be Dreambox Math, which would be appropriate for tier one and tier two math for, for students.
Did you present that to us today?
I haven't presented that to you. I'm, I'm giving you a specific example that you.
I'm talking about what you, what you presented today.
So for example,
What you said today?
For example, Ms. Walker talked about T I S and the, the, all of the whys. So when I'm looking at the statute that you refer to, it says.
Which one are you talking about? The new law or?
Seven-two-five-one-five-three. Five-one-five-three, right.
Wait a minute, is that the new law or is that the?
I believe this is the new law, yes. And so it says, provide evidence-based instruction and, and support services to such students inside and outside the school set. So for example, when we were talking about the devices and all of the processes that we have put in place to ensure that there is enough support, that qualifies as support services to such students inside and outside the school setting. We need to make sure, especially with the pandemic and the possibility of remote learning if, if kids get sick. That is, that is, we see it as directly tied it as a support service that we have to have in place to ensure that kids have access to education. What may help is maybe to link when we, when we submit the, the recommendations for expenditures to link it to what areas or what evidence-based instruction strategies we're using.
Well, the point is, if, if, if at the end of the day, it's used properly,
Right.
adequately, and it's a judgment call. We believe it is.
Right.
But, but of course, it's not gonna be K S D E who, who drops that hammer on us. And, and that's the unfortunate part. And yes, if you continue to read, we have five years, but things don't change overnight. And, and you know, there's a target on, not our back, straight between the eyes. So that's all I'm, I'm, I'm asking for the board to be able to do its job. That again, would that cost, would that spend forty-five million dollars?
Will what spend for?
Just what you said, example you gave.
That is one example. We're not gonna spend forty-five million dollars on devices. That's one example. And if we get to the at-risk at the end of the session today, Dr. Winn, you will see the different, the, the different items in which we spend and the amounts that we spent. So, so I'm hoping that we will get there today. And if not, I will submit it. But we, we did divide it into the different categories and how much we spent. And that's the current spending. For future proposals, I think what you're, what I'm thinking that may be useful to give the board the tools to, as you said, do their job when you are reviewing or approving or considering approving the expenditures is to add those strategies that we're linking it to, so that you can use that as your judgment tool.
And again, it is not Dr. Winn, it is the board's responsibility. And, and because I am immersed in it for at least ninety days, that's why I am compelled to ask for clarification over and over again. And I know it is redundant. And I know people resent it. But if it's state statute, the board can't do its job without the data. So thank you, Mr. Lopez. And thank you, Ms. Walker. And thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Walker before we move forward? Thank you, Dr. Winn. I, I, I think again, we're, we're, we're all trying to speak the same language and, and say, you know, hey, we, we do want to measure, you know, how we're, we do want to look at the budget, how we're using our dollars and how do we measure that where we're spending our dollars is leading to some of that, that academic achievement that we're going to be looked at from the legislature and other.
And, and let me clarify, Mr. Lopez, that we do welcome any questions that the board has or any information that the board needs to make mindful decisions. We do welcome the questions. So please don't, don't hesitate to ask.
Other thoughts before we continue to move forward? Mr. Covington?
Thanks, sir. The next phase, we're gonna give you more details on those initiatives that I quickly outlined at the board meeting. I sent you all a word document that has the more details on those. So we're just gonna walk through those today and feel any questions that you all may have. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget initiatives that's included in the superintendent's plan for success. I'm just gonna go back and remind you all of your strategic priorities and how you all rank them with high expectations for student achievement being number one. And as you see the rest fall in line. Also want to just bring back to you, to your forethought about the state-approved budget that we should be receiving as part of that, the Gannon lawsuit and the mill levy change that was approved by the board. So our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two proposed initiative costs. Starting at the top. Certified, in the past, we've done about a three percent salary increase. That, that is just a piece of history. It's not saying that's what we're proposing. That's just the history of what we have done before. We've also looked at, that, that three percent would include staff and change to the base for all, all staff. And there's been changes for the master's program before. Yeah, if you see that, like, four lines down, there's a market adjustment for the master's level. That's usually an increase in a percentage, either to the base or steps to, to get us more marketable at the master's level. The spared two percent is a stipend that we approved two months ago. And unless we decide to stop that stipend, we would need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to continue doing the spare additional two percent, which I think we should continue to provide that incentive to help us recruit spared staff. Classified staff, again, three percent is what we've used before. And then we've also used two percent. So this is not a recommendation. This is just for history purposes as to type of salary increases that we provided to classify. The market adjustment for powers, aides, and support, we've listened to what's going on around the nation about increasing pay. And so we are looking at increasing our pay for our lower-paid staff. And if you can see, with this increase of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars that our pay tables, starting salaries for powers would go from fourteen forty-three to fifteen dollars. Our aides, which are listed as seats class one, you'll see those going from thirteen oh-five to fourteen oh-three as starting pay. You'll see two aides, which is your E C and E S L aides, and those other jobs listed beside there goes from fourteen sixty-one to fifteen sixty-one. And our support class, which is our central office secretaries and beta assistants, goes from thirteen fifty to fourteen twenty-five. So we are trying to adjust to get closer to a market level and living wage. And like I said, the total proposed, proposed cost of that, those initiatives, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. And that supports priorities three and four, which is our best-studied resources and high-performance workforce. Next, you have the market adjustment for principals, A Ps, directors, and assistants. If you recall, Rachel walked you all through a presentation on a comp analysis of those positions and how we are behind the market here in our area. The gap is possibly forty to fifty thousand dollars between those levels of people and our next level being our executive directors. It's very difficult to attract external hires to our district. And many of our experienced staff leave our district to get higher paid in other districts. This proposal would impact a hundred and twenty-five employees. It will make us more competitive. It's a cost of nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. And it's also your priorities three and four of good stores and high-performance workforce. Holiday pay. We're recommending that all our non-exempt staff who work less than two-hundred-and-sixty-one days receive five days of holiday pay. This is a barrier that I know we have in attracting people to work in our cafeterias and drive our buses. Because as you know, if school is out and they can't work, they don't get paid. So we are proposing a five days of holiday pay for this staff. At that cost, it would be five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars. Again, priorities three and four.
Mr. Covington?
Yes.
Can I ask a question now or do you want me to wait?
Oh, you can ask right now, ma'am.
Okay, how, how do we compare for holiday pay with other districts for anyone for non-two-sixty-one staff? Because when you look at the business world, they're getting more holiday and sick days and at least fifteen dollars, even at McDonald's. And we're talking about five days. So how do we compare? Is Shiny Mission just paying five? Blue Valley, look, everybody around us. I mean, have we looked at that and thought about bumping that?
We know that bus drivers, for example, most recently are being offered four days of holiday pay. So this is better.
But that's, everybody is just doing four days?
I don't know if everybody is, but typically you don't get paid these at all. It's, you know, or if you're an hourly worker, less. or if you're an hourly worker, less, that. So, this is what we recommended, um, based on what we're seeing in the market, you know?
Okay, but we're going to start having some problems because you compete who are given more, and if we're not able to fill it, I'm not saying give twenty, but I would think we would need to do more than five. I'm just, that's just my opinion. And I need to know if you had the data to back that up of all the surrounding districts.
I, I'm sure Rachel does, so we can provide that. Do you want to see the supporting data?
Yeah, I would, I would like to. Thank you.
Okay, uh-huh, no problem.
Okay, and we'll get that information to the whole board. Uh, I did skip over one, I'm sorry. The bilingual, bi-literate salary increase, salary differential. We're proposing a five percent salary differential for principals and assistant principals. Right now, to help recruit and retain staff that possess this most needed skill. Uh, we believe that possessing this skill will help our, uh, students and how they interact with, uh, school administration. The proposed cost of this is fifty-thousand dollars, and it would serve approximately ten people. Uh, I had stopped on longevity. Uh, this funding, as I said, we started this program two years ago. Uh, this is just the continued cost of people moving into the no, different number of years and the approximate cost to continue that for, as I say, for, at the ten-year point, the fifteen, and the twenty-year points is five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars. Our employer health insurance premium increase, uh, we met with, uh, CBIS and the market rate for health insurance is increasing, it's somewhere between twelve to fifteen percent. The cost to cover the employee, employee, the employee insurance that we cover is going to increase by five percent, and it, and it cost us a million dollars to cover just the employer portion that we pay for our employees. Now, there will be an additional cost increase to the premiums that our employees would have to pay. Uh, we don't have that number yet, but we do know that that cost is also increasing. Next, the next section is on the building assessment needs. We went through the building assessments with all the principals, with their IOs. And these are the things that rose to the top as the things that our buildings needed to help improve student achievement. As you all know, textbooks, we've had several, uh, meetings on textbooks and, uh, the age of our textbook and curriculum, uh, these dollars would be used to bring us more up-to-date and to maintain funding in the budget, just so we can, uh, keep, keep the, uh, rotation when it's time to update, uh, our curriculum. As you recall, the budget now has nine-hundred-thousand dollars in it. Uh, that would not support any, uh, major curric- curriculum refresh. So we're proposing putting up one-point-five million to that budget to make it now two-point-four million a year to cover, uh, curriculum refreshes.
Hey Dennis, your screen's not, you haven't advanced your next slide.
There you go. Uh, okay. Next on the list is assistant principals. In, in, uh, collaboration with the schools listed and the IOs, uh, we are proposing adding an additional assistant principal that will provide support for our teachers through focusing walkthroughs and targeted feedback, which will have a direct impact on student achievement. Uh, the, the schools, as you see, are listed, are Central, Glory Willis, Harvey Bruce, Roseville, Arrowhead, Washington, and Wind Dot. Uh, the two middle school that's not listed, me and Azahara in Argentine, they already have an additional assistant principal. To add these press, these seven APs, it will cost the district one-point-five million dollars. Uh, ESL teacher, uh, it came to light that, uh, we currently do not have an ESL teacher that supports our, our alternative schools. So we are recommending adding the ESL teacher. And we only need thirty-three-thousand dollars of state funding. The rest comes from a federal grant uh, with their increase, and that we are recommending, uh, adding this ESL teacher for a cost of the thirty-three-one. The priority teacher program. This is a program that, uh, you all know that we, uh, support to have our parents to get certified to be, uh, teachers. Uh, we are proposing to, uh, have them work alongside our teachers during the summer and get, they get a two-thousand-dollar stipend for working during the summer. Uh, this program will support seventeen such people in that program. It will cost us approx- approximately thirty-four-thousand-four-hundred dollars. And it supports our high expectations for student achievement, safe and respectful learning environment, and provide good steward of resources and financial accountability.
Mr. Covington?
Yes, ma'am.
It, we're going to give them this, but what guarantee do we have that they're going to complete the program? Is there something we're asking in return that if you receive this money, you, you know, the ties in with us paying with the classes too? You know, I would hate to pay and then the people leave. So, you know, we have a tendency to do that. We want to make sure we get some, some kind of bang out of our buck.
We, we do have, and I, what we can design here, this is something new that we haven't offered in the past, this additional stipend. Uh, but we could add a, you know, some type of, they have to give so many years of service, maybe a year for the two thousand. You know, we're, we're talking about that as relates to.
We could be using the same rates that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're putting in place.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I, I just think we prepared too many people for other school districts. That's my opinion. This is not a knock. But if we're going to do this, you, you, the hope is you get something back. You know, I just don't want to keep putting money into people.
No, but.
Somewhere else.
Ms. Page, a reminder that, um, we already have, um, the commitment that they have to sign that for every so much money that, and we're bringing it back to the board, so we'll have more conversation on that on Tuesday. But for, um, eh, uh, a, a specific amount of money that we spend on them, they owe us one year of service, so, um.
So you're going to tie that in to also the academic part of it? Where they're, when they go off to school, whatever schools they participate in. I just want to make.
Pay for it, it will, right.
Okay.
I need to back up to this one. Um, I gave you the wrong dollar amount.
I thought so.
That was a textbook dollar amount. I apologize. It's only six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. It's only, it costs the six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I think we were looking at the amounts, uh, Mr. Covington, so we knew what you meant.
I'm glad you corrected that, because I wanted to ask. That's a lot of money for those principals.
No, it's, yeah.
Right, it's six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. I apologize. The next two positions goes back to, uh, what, uh, Lisa Walker tried to walk us through and explain how, uh, in doing our building needs assessments, it came to light that we need an instructional technology department. Right now, we don't have anyone in technology to have the skills to be an instructional technology manager or specialist. So we are proposing that we add these two jobs as a start to, uh, creating an instructional technology department. A manager, it costs about eighty thousand, and a specialist is about seventy thousand. These positions will support all teachers and students across the district. And going over the building assessment needs, this central middle school principal identified that they would need an additional science teacher to help lower the class sizes at that school. And this will allow for them to have a, all of their science teachers to meet during a PLC. So that teacher at Central Middle School will cost fifty-five thousand dollars. Also during the assessments, we met with Gloria Willis's principal. And what came out of that meeting was that she need two additional encore or elective teachers, which will allow for their elective class size to be significantly lowered. So those two teacher positions will cost a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. Wellborn Elementary and McKenzie Elementary identified that they needed a, a general K-five teacher, one at each school, to reduce their class sizes. And those two teachers cost a hundred-and-ten thousand. At Wind Dot High School, um, with eighteen hundred students, they currently have four counselors. Uh, they're in need, I'm an additional one to take the total to five. And that's still well above the, what's recommended as a counselor-student ratio. But an additional one would lower that ratio tremendously. So that counselor would cost seventy thousand dollars. Those are all things that were identified during the building assessment needs when we met with the principals and with the IOs.
Mr. Covington, there was a couple that identified a need for intervention teachers. What is that?
It's like a, um, well, would one of the IOs answer that question?
Intervention teachers would be, um, additional teachers that we bring in to work with small groups with specific standards or specific skills identified as, um, being deficient. When we analyze the data and we identify areas in which students are, um, either, um, having gaps or need additional reinforcement. Um, so, for example, um, some schools may want an intervention teacher for kindergarten to, um, to support reading and to provide additional instruction in reading. Or a school may identify that their scores are low in fourth grade math. For example, we, we had a couple of years in which, um, the data told us fourth grade math was a challenge. So they may request an intervention teacher to provide additional support during the day. Um, and it's usually during small group instruction.
So I guess my question is, if after the board reviews state assessments and everything else, if we feel that there are some needs for intervention teachers, you'll be able to cost that out?
Yes, ma'am, but let me add that. We, we did, we have increased our number of intervention teachers. Who, uh, we had some, uh, vacant, um, Matt helped me out, I think, was coaches.
Uh, no, not the coaches.
Not coaches.
I'm just reading the raw data from the.
Yes, but we. Yeah, that was like, I think, seven, in a, seven or eight.
That's coming out of SRS. That's part of our, um, SRS proposal, um, and it's something that we can consider possibly for SR three funds is to determine if intervention teachers are needed for more schools. Right now, we had four, seven.
Yes, so that, when we did, uh, give those intervention teachers to those schools.
I'll wait till you finish before I ask you questions. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Additional staffing needs at central office is the next category.
Dennis, you can't see the, you can't see.
Can you look at the screen? We can't see it very well.
Yeah, we, we have your write-up, but we don't have the numbers.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I, on our selected screen too. Hold on. Can you see it now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Uh, the first one, um, you all have already approved. That was this superintendent for teaching and learning. The next section is our equity inclusion department. As you all recall, we funded this department out of our disproportionality funding from, uh, our spared allocation that funding expires in September of this year. So we need to cover the cost of the, um, executive director and the two coordinators for nine months for this current year. And then we will add additional three months in next year's budget. But for the nine months for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that cost is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
Mr. Covington, can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Regarding that, that department, uh, that's just for staffing, correct? That doesn't include any, anything budgeted for actually if they had any initiatives or programs or trainings that they wanted to provide, or you, basically that line item is just for staffing, but not, does not include, um, dollars in their budget to.
Uh, uh, there is a line item that addresses that, sir. Uh, give me a moment, we'll get down to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Not a problem. The next category is those, our custodian supervisor. Uh, we currently have one custodian supervisor that supervises over two-hundred-and-seventy-five custodians. This is a monumental task. Uh, we are proposing that we add two additional custodian supervisors that will provide, provide surprise support for all the custodians throughout the district. Those two additional supervisors will cost us a hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars.
Mr. Covington?
Yes, ma'am.
You're adding supervisors, but I know when I taught and I came out in twenty-seventeen, they didn't have enough custodians, and that's still a problem. So it, has there been any consideration to add more custodians?
When we looked at the number of custodians we have or positions, we have enough positions. The problem is we have a lot of vacancies. So we have enough custodian budgeted. It's keeping the jobs field is our main problem.
Okay, because I, I, again, this is twenty-twenty-one, and I know they just didn't have enough people, because we did a lot of cleaning ourselves if we wanted the room to be clean. But you're saying that's not the issue that we don't have, but to me, it just seemed like they didn't have enough.
Ms. Page, I will get you the allocation per school for our custodians. I know we have done some, uh, changing of their hours to where we have more staff that's, um, working in the evening time to get the school prepared for the next day. And that was a major shift that we done this year. Uh, now unfortunately, um, this kid wasn't in school this year. But I do believe we have enough positions and with the staggering of the times that we have enough coverage of, of our frontline custodian.
Well, would you know offhand what the, in terms of vacancies, how many do we have?
Uh, no, ma'am, do not know right now, but I would get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Mr. Covington, this is Yolanda. So when we say, uh, custodian supervisors, we're not talking about supervisors over the building when I hear one. We're talking about dividing and, um, because when I see the word supervisors, I think there are supervisors actually in the, in the buildings over the custodians.
Right, those are head custodians.
Gotcha.
These are the people that we work in central office and be over a, a group of custodians, including those head custodians.
That's what I needed clarity on. Okay.
And Dennis, uh, Dennis, I wanted to mention that they will be getting the vacancy report, so they can see how many open positions there are for custodians.
So they can see how many open positions there are for custodians, uh, as of today. That'll come out, you know, tonight as part of their board packet.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
Next, we have our marketing specialist, uh, the communications department. Uh, the role that we have asked them to step up and do has, has created what had created a void. Uh, we have put a person over there into marketing as the marketing specialist that supported them throughout this year. Uh, that person was moved from a position that we do need to fill, which was our receptionist. So we're going to hire our receptionist back and we need to add a marketing specialist. Over in the communications department to help them with all the, uh, things that we've asked them to do to increase our. Publicity and our, and our footprint in our community. The total proposed cost is fifty-five thousand, five thirty-seven for the marketing specialist. Uh, we are proposing that we hire an additional H R manager. Uh, this request will allow another salaried employee to work at a higher level than our assistants. And to do some planning and, and, uh, help with our. Efficiencies in our H R department. Uh, it will help our principals and all employees. That we, uh, currently have a fun of these functions needs to move from transaction work to strategic work for the H R department. Total cost of that manager is seventy-two thousand, nine seventy-five. We also need to hire an additional H R assistant. That handles all our leaves, uh, and within this district, uh, it is overwhelming with the staff that we have there now. This person, uh, will be able to step in and help keep up with the demand on leaves. Along with additional burdens of the COVID leave processing and other things associated with all the leaves that we have in the district. The total cost of the assistant is forty-eight thousand dollars.
Now, we've bought new software for the H R department, correct?
Yes, we have.
We bought, uh, we bought a package that helps with, you know, the letters, the, the, um. Basically, this, the templates that we use for sending out letters and helping keep track of people who are on leave. It's a software package, yes.
Are these, are all these salaries, Mr. Covington, just salaries or salaries and benefits?
That, that should be salary plus benefits cuz that, yeah.
They have salary plus benefits.
For everything that you've listed?
Yes, ma'am.
Teachers included?
Yes, ma'am. The next two, uh, positions are within our technology department. Uh, we need a help desk manager and an assistant. Uh, with, with all the devices that we have out in the district over twenty-five hundred. And with them going home and we had lots of breakage, uh, and repairs, uh, our help desk is overwhelmed. Uh, we only have two people there now and we lost one last year for a while due to illness. Then went down to one, then that one had to go on vacation, so we had none for a while. So we are proposing that we add an additional assistant. And a help desk manager. The cost for the manager is eighty thousand dollars and the cost for the assistant is, uh, forty-one thousand.
Is there a job description for these two jobs?
Um, no, ma'am, but I would make sure you all get those. We do have for the assistant cuz that's just an increase. The manager is a totally new position.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you justify the cost. What are we comparing it to? So that's, that's my concern.
Other managers that's in technology. That's in the technology department.
Do you have pay tables for these positions?
Ms. Page?
Yeah, I, I was wondering for these positions, would they have to have a degree? Or would, could the individual? May, if they went to go tech school, they're, they know how to fix, they got the experience, they have the certificates. I was just wondering, would they have to have a degree in?
I will have to look at that job description, ma'am.
Yeah, we can, we can provide the job descriptions for all of these.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is an upgrade of a position that we currently have. We're recommending, uh, upgrading one of our hardware technicians. To an instructional device manager that supports all our student MacBook Pros and our iPads. Uh, we only need fifteen thousand dollars to upgrade that job.
So what would be the total salary? Of this position?
It would be at the eighty thousand dollars.
And Mr. C, Mr. Covington, that's just one person who's doing that?
Yes. And the last section of our, our proposals is the sustaining operations piece. Uh, diploma plus. As you all know, the legislature has approved us to use state funding to cover the cost of dual enrollment and tech classes. The total cost that we have associated with diploma plus is about a million one. Um, we're gonna use approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we get through donations to totally support. Uh, the remaining cost for the diploma plus, so that we're adding the, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars for diploma plus operations. And diversity and inclusion, recruitment and support. Uh, Randy, this gets to, um. A portion of what you was asking. Uh, the recruitment side, as you all can see, there is a plan. To, uh, increase our marketing outreach efforts to attract and hire candidates who reflect the diversity of Kansas City, Kansas. Including but not limited to race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion or socioeconomic stats. So within the H R department, they have a plan to, uh, help recruit diversity and inclusion. And that plan costs approximately twenty-three thousand dollars. It would be school-based recruiting. Not just district recruiting, they will work with principals of the schools and, and, uh. Help design a recruitment strategy for each individual school. The other twenty-seven thousand dollars, it would be for the operations of the diversity and inclusion department. As Randy said, it would cover P D, travel, supplies, equipment, things to operate that department. Or total of fifty thousand dollars for diversity and inclusion. And last but not least on the list is our district insurance premiums. Uh, this is just an estimate right now. We are still working with all the insurance providers. Uh, to, uh, review the premiums, uh, we've had some notification. Of like the general liability will be going up. We just don't have the cost right now. But the, uh, estimate for all the increases for the different insurances right now is at two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Covington.
Yes, ma'am.
A question on the diversity, inclusion, recruitment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just wanna, now you mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I didn't hear you correctly. That twenty-three thousand would go for professional development?
No, no, uh, the twenty-three thousand is for, uh, the, the plan that H R. Has, uh, for increasing our outreach is allocated at five hundred dollars per school. For them to work, uh, on a plan individually for that school.
Okay, and professional.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars is for the operations of the department. Remember, we added the executive director. And the two coordinators. Uh, we added twenty-seven thousand dollars to that, to their budget. For P D or any other things that, um, the executive director would need to operate the department effectively.
Well, is twenty-seven enough for professional development? I know when, when Jason was in, he did, uh, I think some of the monies, and again, correctly if I'm wrong. Came out of professional development where they would go in and do book studies and things. I'm just thinking, is it more money in professional development that they could utilize as well as?
Yes, ma'am. We have some money entitled to.
Well, I just wanted to make sure cuz twenty-seven didn't sound like a lot.
Now, this, this is in addition to the, to all the other funds that we have so that they would have something in their budget that they could. Plan and, and know that, that in addition to everything else we're doing for the whole district, they have that money allocated just, um, for their work.
Okay, I just, I, I was hoping, I just, cuz I know he did book studies. They went and did some other things through the regular professional development. So I just didn't want them to be shortchanged.
No.
Make sure it was enough. Thank you.
Could you give us an example of five hundred dollar recruitment effort? Or combined recruitment effort that would cost five hundred dollars? Or what would you use the five hundred dollars for?
Um, I would, I don't know all the specifics. It was just an idea that we had to work with the principals at the building. On the things that were important to them, how they, you know, it could be, for example, ban, banners, flyers. Could be some type of, you know, hosting some type of, uh, event, um, that, you know, would obviously. It would really be working towards what a specific principal at a building would think would be. You know, extra that, that they would like us to try to do on their behalf to attract diverse talent.
Okay, thank you.
This is Yolanda. I do have, I have two questions. One, I'm just trying to still understand the process here. So, uh, the positions that are being added, those that are new positions. What I think I understand is, um, those funds or those, those dollars are being budgeted this year. And then going forward, for example, the schools, we talked about a few of the schools or even the custodian supervisor position. So going forward, those dollars would be included in their budget. That's where we would see those.
Yes.
These positions have been approved.
Right, when you, when we all, when you all approved the budget, we would load those dollars into those departments.
And so ongoing, that's where we would see those dollars versus them being in a separate place.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then my second question is, what's the justification process, very high level? And I know some, some positions is just very glaring that you need them, but then other positions, what's the justification process? When you get ready to add the staff or add positions in departments?
Mainly it's based on need and, and, uh, support of, uh, student achievement.
So are you having a conversation or you or whoever having a conversation with that, with that cabinet level? I don't have the hierarchy system with who, and then they are justifying this position needs to be here because they've had conversation with their staff?
Yes, so it starts within the department. And then they, when we have our budget meetings within the department, they bring forth stuff from their departmental meetings. To the, um, budget meeting with myself and my team. And then we put a, a list together that we then take to the cabinet. Where they defend these positions and if they, if they made it to this list, uh, it is with the support of the cabinet.
Okay, and then my last question is, in, in terms kind of of that, how often or in that process? And maybe it's up to each individual manager, are they looking at what should be consolidated within roles? Or are they looking at capacity of current staff and where consolidation should maybe take place? So how are we aligning that? Is that happening in that conversation as well, as well as what I'm assuming?
When we, we do review staff, staffing levels within the departments. Uh, there have been some changes where we, uh, combined some jobs. Or that we had to either add a job, but, uh, it's part of that process we do look at staffing.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, let me follow up on that same train of thought. So in essence. Regardless of what. One would have read on the, all of these individual schools needs assessments. Again, while they included the. Assessment, assessment scores, and we know that there is a glaring. Eighty-five to ninety percent not proficient in all the schools, maybe perhaps Sumner, but all the schools. Help me understand, and I've asked you this question before. At this point. Will you be able to further close that loop with, for example. A K five teacher? Now, that's the easiest one because if you can reduce class size, hopefully there is some. Increased achievement because you have smaller class size. At what point is that evaluated? In the school year? At what point do we know that, that one hundred and ten thousand dollars for, is this just one teacher? No, two, one at Wogan and one in McKinley. So at, at what point? Are, does the system evaluate whether that? One hundred and ten thousand allocation translated into improved student achievement? Please.
So, um, I can give you an example of, um, one school where, where it was done. And, and this is the way we would do it. We use formative assessments along the way. We have, um. Um, a system in place for common assessments and schools have data walls. So I'm, I'm thinking of, um. White, um, not white church, um.
Well, it doesn't matter. You can say any school.
Um, where, where, where they had, the, the data wall had by grade level. And by teacher so that we could see where students were at any point in time and how they were moving from. Uh, either month to month or quarter to quarter. And part of the data wall was the intervention teacher. So identifying the students that the intervention teacher was working with and where they should be, where they were. And where, how they moved from month to month. Um, one of the, um, goals that we have set with the instructional improvement officers is for any. Um, investment that is made at the schools, there will be, that would be part of a quarterly, um, check-in. That we will have with principals where they will have to bring the data to show if it's a software that they are using. Uh, what is the data that they are collecting to monitor on an ongoing basis? How, um, that software is helping students if it's an intervention teacher? Um, what data do we have as baseline data and how are we monitoring the, the progress of those students? So those systems are being put in place, um, to have regular check-ins with principals. Where they can not only monitor themselves, but share with us so that we know from a systems view. How, um, any of these investments are tied to student achievement.
Well, that's good to know because again, what is past is prologue, but moving forward is. What we need to concentrate on in my opinion. May I ask some generic, some questions for general or Mr. Lopez you wanna wait?
Um, Mr. Covington, is there more that you need to cover?
Oh, that was it, sir.
Okay, Dr. Lynn, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, can we start at the beginning, Mr. Covington?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just for the, for the certified staff, the, help me if, if I have not been able to find it. But the current twenty twenty-one teacher's salary schedule is not in the library. Is it someplace else?
It's, it's in the library with the contract. It's, I can't remember what page it is on the contract. So if you look at the.
It's not under teacher salaries.
No, it's some of the, uh, just the negotiated contracts on the library and the salary schedules embedded in that document.
Okay, now is, is the, well. Is a stipend included in, in that salary schedule or it has not been added?
No, stipends are not in the salary schedule. Um, that way, it's, the contract will say what the stipends could be. Or where they propose, but the actual stipends are not shown in this schedule.
So will they?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, um, market adjustment. Is there some logic to why there isn't a dollar added to these three categories? It's like, you know, forty-seven cents. Twenty-five cents, you know. Twenty-five cents, you know, dollar twenty-five instead of, of, I mean, is it, what, what was the logic in these numbers, please? Under market adjustment pairs, A's and support.
You're asking, how did we get to those numbers? Yeah, so Rachel did some scenarios based on some feedback that, that we received from the board. Um, to say, how could we adjust some categories of employees? Uh, that would not have a compression effect to other categories. So, and to try to get to close to fifteen dollars an hour. So this is based off of Rachel's. Um, Rachel Schwartz's analysis of where we could, one, adjust. Some positions and it would not have an impact on other positions because we have to watch that compression issue. And also places where, for example, in the case of the paras, where we always have, quite honestly, a lot of vacancies. So also helps us be more competitive. Um, and so that is the, the logic that we used.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the next item for the principals, directors, so. Because I'm, I'm, I'm always reminded that I didn't do my homework first with, before asking questions. So would I go back to the slide you all provided to find these people or? How would, this, this total cost, how does that distributed? So how would I, how would I not ask you to do it, but figure it out myself?
Uh, you, you do have some slides that we made available to you through the presentations that Rachel did. It's been a, probably a couple of months ago now. Um, and it has in there some analysis of what our current. Pay is for those positions and what other districts are paying. So we have analysis on other districts. And then we have some recommendations on what. Pay would be i- if we adjusted it.
And also, um, Dr. Lynn, it's also in the narrative that uh Mr. Covington sent earlier today.
Good, alright.
I'm, I'm looking at the narrative, but. When you say.
By category. It doesn't break it out by category.
Yeah, Rachel's analysis does do that. And if you need us to resend it, certainly we can do that. It's no problem.
I tell you, you can know where it is. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, the second bilingual salaries. Help me understand, is this? Five percent additional to the previous pay raise for a principal, assistant principal who is bilingual?
This would be five percent of their current salary. And that's also in the narrative. Where it says recommending a five percent salary differential for principals and assistant principals as an incentive to recruit and retain. And, and we're hoping in, in the future that this will be something that we could offer to um any employee. For whom being bilingual in one of the languages that we need is an added skill that we would um. Want to compensate for as a, as a form of recruitment.
Okay, so I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you said, maybe because I didn't ask the question correctly. Who does the five percent salary differential go to?
This proposal is for principals or assistant principals. Coming in new or who are currently in their position. Who are bilingual and belligerent in one of the languages that are needed in the district.
Okay, so that would be five percent on top of what is already proposed in the market adjustment. Previously?
Yes, yes. Because the, the, the market adjustment is for everybody. But for those principals who are bilingual, we want to offer that market adjustment. And the additional five percent for being bilingual in one of the languages we need.
And that's based on five percent of their current salary? After the adjustment.
I don't have the details, Dr. Lynn. I can look into that and send you a breakdown if, if that's what's being asked. I don't have the details.
I'm just trying to understand the narrative. It says recommending a five percent salary differential. You explained it as a principal or assistant principal who is bilingual.
So, so let me, let, may, maybe let me explain with an example. If, if, if. There are two principals and they both make a hundred thousand dollars. One is bilingual and the other one is not. The non-bilingual, the salary is still one hundred thousand. The bilingual principal would get the one hundred thousand plus the five percent, one hundred thousand.
And that then if we approve the market adjustment, both already got the. X percent increase and the five percent then is on top of that for the bilingual person.
Right, the five percent is additional.
Right.
Okay, does the holiday pay include Martin Luther King Day? Is that one of your paid holidays identified?
We, we give, we're just giving it as pay. So it's five days.
Okay.
I mean, we can just, yeah, it's, it's basically five days.
Simply, thank you. It's just rest, yes, no question. On the longevity, I never understood this. Is this? When you hit that mark of ten, fifteen, twenty years? Or is it every year between ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen? Is it every year or only when you hit that mark?
Every year, ma'am.
Every year. A couple more, please. The, the last comment you made or into the, help me understand why a. And maybe I misunderstood this. With an individual who's just an individual insurance. You said that their costs would go up.
Okay, the district pays, pays the, the, if, if I select just the employee uh insurance. The district covers that cost.
Cost to the employee for the, okay, because we have been told in some situations. The pay, that employee would have to pay additional for any, the single plan and I, and I thought that was.
No, no, ma'am. We covered that.
Okay. And all, all of these salaries, just like you said, are just salaries and benefits?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Covington, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
It's about diploma plus, if you want to scroll down to that. Okay, so the, the budget for diploma plus this year was, let's just round it down to eight million dollars. And you're adding eight hundred thousand to it for next year. Is that correct?
No, we're, we are covering the cost of the uh tuition. Or the dual, dual and concurrent and the uh tech classes and books.
Okay, but you're, I was looking at the, the paper that you gave us.
Like staffing is included in that total number, ma'am.
Okay, so, but the state has said that we can use general funds to pay for tuition now. Correct. Okay, so. We're gonna take eight, eight hundred thousand out of our general fund. Is that what you're, okay. And you're saying that we're gonna still use two hundred and fifty thousand from donations. To cover. Okay, so that ends up to being a little bit around a million dollars a year for tuition. For our students.
Yes.
Do you have any idea how much our tuition cost us this year?
Uh, was roughly uh seven hundred and, well, not this year, previously.
Previously, right.
Fully operational, it was like almost eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're hoping each year to increase that as more of our kids go to diploma plus. Um, now, I've, I've asked this question a couple of times and. I know you guys have been really busy and I haven't gotten an answer yet. Some of our teachers. Are adjunct professors for the community college and teach, teach the college level classes in our high school, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but we still pay tuition to the community college. We don't get a discount on their tuition, correct?
I'm not uh the expert on that question, ma'am. I would have to have Dr. um Bibble Irving. To get back with you on that question.
Okay, because I mean, number one, I want to make sure that if we have our high school teachers teaching college level classes. That there be reimbursed adequately, but also if the community college is paying them. For teaching. College level classes, then I would assume that. We're not also paying them at the same time for teaching a high school class when they're really teaching. A college level class. There has to be some kind of an adjustment made to their salary. So they're not getting paid for teaching two classes at once when they're teaching one class. If you, you see where I'm, you see where I'm going?
Yes, ma'am. And I will pass that on to Dr. Irving.
So there would be some kind of either uh adjustment in their salary where. We would get some kind of a, a credit that would help their building out with some other salaries or something. It just seems to be kind of confusing. Because I want to make sure that if they are teaching college level classes, that they're getting compensated fairly, but. If, if the community college is paying them, then apparently we should not be paying them for the same time.
Yes, ma'am.
And that, that way we would have more money that we could put towards more. More college tuition or tech tuition for our students. But, and are, are we thinking that since this next year? We hope everything will be back to normal. We'll have more students enrolling in tech and college level classes?
Yes, we truly hope so.
Okay, and that, and that's why we built in a little bit more.
Yes, ma'am. And it, and it's also built in to cover any, any new programs that we want to bring on to, to help the kids get credentials.
Okay, because we, if we have a higher number of students enrolling in tech. We will need more busing options for our students too, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you guys have got that all figured out. Okay, so that's, we, we really should thank the legislature for uh. Deciding that we can use our general funds for diploma plus then. That's a definite. Some one positive that's come out of the legislative session.
We were very happy, Miss Lynn. Very happy.
So thank you, Dr. Lynn, for a, a positive.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Ever, there's always. Trust me. Um, first, Mr. Covington. Do we just have dual enrollment with KCKCC?
Uh, yes. We don't have it with any other uh community college. And I think too, for us to go to another community college, what we're trying to offer cannot be offered by KCKCC.
Yeah, that's, that's in the statute. So we'd have to, just like any school district has to initially go to the community college that shares the boundaries. With the school district and only if there is a program that is not offered by that community college can you then enter into one of these contracts for. Um, or with another um community college. So for example, if. Um, Johnson County Community College offered something that, a program that KCKCC didn't offer, then you could enter into a contract with. Johnson County for those courses.
Because what I was mentioning, there is a um stipulation and more accountability in this new legislation. That not only does the college have to have a, and Greg, I'm sure you know about this. If not, you will come August. That the college has to have more of a um oversight role. Of the, the coursework and where they may not have put students on probation before. There is a vague kind of clause that says the students have to remain in good standing before they can be enrolled. So I don't know if, Dr. Miguel, you have shared this with Dr. Bibble Irving. But there's a little bit more accountability built in.
Yes, and, and we'll, we'll take a look at all of that. Thank you, Dr. Lynn.
Dr. Miguel, do we need to.
Yes, sir.
Bring the discussion about the assistant principals.
Right, so we were hoping, um, we presented the, the request for the um. Seven assistant principals and we were hoping to get. Um, that through this conversation, if, if it's um agreeable to the whole board. And you see the need that we could get those positions approved so that we could post them and actually fill the positions. Before principals um end the school year, knowing that um as we fill. AP positions, it may create other vacancies, so it usually has a ripple effect since we strive whenever possible. To fill from within. So we're hoping that today we would walk away with at least the assistant principal positions. Um, approved by the board.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, Mr. Covington. Um, so can you remind, again for clarity, can you remind how many positions you were. Um, recommending and asking for approval for, from the board?
Seven positions, five for um middle schools and two high schools.
Correct.
Thank you.
What's the salaries? I mean, I can't do it.
Mr. Covington, can you go back to that? There it is, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
And these, this is based off of those building needs assessment conversation with those um principals.
These are requests, correct.
And at the cabinet level. So there has been some, um, I, I think going back to Ms. Clark's question about process. How, how some of these positions have come uh to being recommendation, recommended. There is a process that has been followed and in place to, to get to this point. So I just, I do want to make sure that the full board um. Knows that. Um, so there is a recommendation.
But Mr. Lopez, my question was, how do you get seven principals out of six twenty-seven thousand? That was my question. Because we were given one point five million to begin with.
And now, no, the, the one point five million was, was.
So that's what I'm saying. How are you doing? What's six twenty, what's the salaries? That's all I'm asking.
Right. Oh, I can't remember. We used.
That's eighty-nine thousand average.
Right, it's, it's an average of eighty-nine thousand dollars. It varies um based on, of course, education, experience. Um, the, the, and the high school um APs um are a little bit higher than the middle school. Uh, we can send all of, all, all of the detail because we have um identified what schools these are for. So we would know, but it added um to six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve to hire assistant principals, five for middle and two for high schools.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there further, further discussion or questions? If not, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
The Brownlee Page.
Maybe muted, Ms. Page.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Leslie, I don't think she heard you.
Dr. Lynn?
Dr. Lynn, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, board. Um, I, I am cognizant of the time. It is four fifty-two right now. Um, and I do want to be respectful of everyone's weekend. And promptly at five or before we, before five. So um at this time, Mr. Covington, Dr. Miguel, uh, and, and staff. Thank you for presenting this. Mr. Covington, anything else that you want to say um prior to, to um us concluding this conversation? I do have a couple of things to, to share. Anything else somewhere here?
Also.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for putting that together. Okay, thank you. Thank you for putting that together. Board, we'll make sure you get this presentation and this information so that you have to, to review at your own leisure as well. Dr. Miguel, anything else? I, I know we're not going to get to the at-risk presentation that, that you had prepared for today. You had mentioned you'll send that to us.
I have it ready to be sent out with a Friday update. It's already attached.
Or is there anything you want to share with the full board while you have us online in terms of setting that, that up before you send that out?
No, just read through it as, as you know, you all will. And please send us any questions that you have as you review the report. That's all. Oops, I realize I'm, you can't see me. And thank you so much for your time and attention today. We will come back with, I, I know, Mr. Lopez, you, you will set some dates for future workshops. So we will keep bringing all of this to the board. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel. So board, you, you should receive some more information today. I apologize, we couldn't get through everything, but really good conversation today, great questions. If there's more questions that you may have, please feel, feel free to send those to Ms. Page and I. And then we can share with our staff to try to get some responses or clarity where needed. I will remind the board and just so that we're, we're all on the same page. We all still do have, we, we received those department budgets for every department that we were reviewing. We have all received the needs assessments for the, the building needs assessments that were completed. So you should, I, you should have all of those and have been working through them and reading through them. If there are specific questions that you might have about any of those building needs assessment, please send those on to Ms. Page and I, and we can get with staff to get those, to, to bring responses and clarity as well for those. But make sure you're reviewing all of those. It sounds like you all have. So I appreciate that and for all the staff for putting that together. We do want to continue these budget conversations. In a conversation yesterday with Ms. Page, Dr. Miguel, Mr. Covington, we thought it might be helpful to do more of a half-day meeting rather than break these up into two-hour increments every once a week, which just kind of, it seems like right as we're getting into a good groove, we have to stop because time, time's up, right? So board members, please be on the lookout. Please look at your calendars. We won't do it right now, but Ms. Smith will, and I and Ms. Page will work together to send out some potential dates for you to review your calendars. I know for those of us that work, it might be a little bit more difficult, but hopefully with enough time, we can find a half-day to really spend together to, to go through our budget and everything else that we need to get through in order to get to an approval of a budget. We are, we do have a timeline that, that Mr. Covington has set for us and by statute that we have to meet. So we just thought a half-day at least might be helpful in this process. You'll get some information from us, be on the lookout for that. My hope is that everyone can attend, but we're, we're going to do what we can to get through, get through this process. So I appreciate that. Be on the lookout for an email from that, from, from Ms. Smith about that. And then just a reminder, we do have our board meeting on, on Tuesday, this upcoming Tuesday. So we'll see everyone there on, at central office on Tuesday. And then I do see, Dr. Winn, you have your hand up. There's something? Yes, please.
Or something? My finger? Could you have Mrs. Smith send the board members a template for the board's budget? So we can think of in our own costs for the clerk, the deputy clerk, the travel, the things like that. We haven't had that conversation yet.
Great. Ms. Page and I will, we'll get with Ms. Smith. We'll work on that. And I know Ms. Smith also had a similar question in, in terms of that. So we'll, we'll get that to the full board. Thank you, Dr. Winn. With that, we'll end today's meeting. I do appreciate everyone's time. Thank you for all the work you're doing, staff and board members. I know it's a long process, but we appreciate your time and, and working through this. Mr. Covington, thank your staff on behalf of the board for all the work you all put into this as well. So everyone, please enjoy the rest of your Friday evening and your weekend, and we'll see you all next week. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.